All right. Good afternoon. The time is four P M. It is August fourth, two thousand twenty five. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Argyle I S D Board of Trustees. This time we'll determine if a quorum is present.
Leona McDade, present.
Josh Westrum, present.
Rich McGow, present.
Matt Slaton, present.
I say I'm saying present. We do have a quorum established and we will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, this time we'll have opening prayer.
Dear Father God, thank you for today. Lord, we are grateful that all of our administrators have so many people joining them today on the first day with faculty and staff. We pray for them. We pray for perseverance. We pray for their well-being, their mental and physical well-being. And ultimately, Lord, we pray just for another great school year here in this blessed district of Argyle. Lord, we pray that you be with us, that you continue to guide us, Lord, and provide wisdom through you. And it's in your son's holy name we pray. Amen.
Okay, we have one individual signed up for public forum. So at this time I will read my spiel. All right, when they all move into public forum portion of tonight's meeting, please note board policy requires speakers to sign up in for speakers to sign up in person. For the meeting is called to order during this portion of the meeting, board members will listen to comments, but as a designated spokesperson, only the president may respond to the speaker if needed and refer concerns to the appropriate administrator. Speakers can comment on agenda items, but trustees will not be able to discuss the items until they are before the board during the meeting. During special meetings such as today, speakers can only comment on agenda items. Board policy B E D local provides the presiding officer the ability to adjust the time allotted per speaker for effective meeting management. Pursuant to that policy, an individual's comments to the board at tonight's meeting shall not exceed five minutes. Presiding officer may reduce the allotted time for each individual to speak to no less than one minute for effective meeting management. Speakers are not allowed to receive time from other individuals. Tonight, each speaker will receive five minutes. Specific complaints about individual district personnel are to be processed through the district's grievance policies as set out in district policies, D B A, F N G, and/or G F. Speakers are not permitted to refer to individual students or employees by name during the public comment period. Additionally, if you have a pending grievance that may come before the board in a level three hearing, please refrain from addressing the topic of your grievance, except through the grievance process. And I'm sorry, I can't read the last name, but Ashley. Ms. Wen, you'll have a timer up here. You have five minutes to speak when you have one minute left. Mr. Slaton here is going to tell you you have one minute left. So whenever you'd like to begin, welcome.
Okay, thank you so much. My son was going to sign up, but we had to get a sleeping toddler out of the car, so I think the sheet got pulled before he was able to sign up as well. So I'm going to read on his behalf. My name is Ashley Wen. I'm from Ponder, Texas, so I was born and raised in this area. I've lived in Argyle since two thousand seventeen. My my husband is a firefighter and a first, he's a first responder, paramedic. We've been homeschooling since the end of the pandemic, which worked out beautifully for us. We started homeschooling after we had noticed that there were a lot of secular issues as far as education for our son and just overall just things that didn't work with our family. So we decided that I would stay home and homeschool our children and teach them. We are very involved in a bunch of co-ops around here and a shout out to Argyle Youth Sports for letting us participate up to sixth grade. We're very involved. In fact, I coached the Talonettes, one of the coaches, and I'm on my way to camp right after this. My daughter, Tyleene, has been in the Talonettes since she was kindergarten. And yeah, I'm here to just speak on behalf of homeschoolers because I've noticed that we haven't had any representation. All of the homeschooled families, and I apologize, I'm losing my voice, so. All of the homeschooled families here in Argyle, we're very active in town. We, you know, we go to church, we participate in the farmer's market. I had posted this on Facebook, I'm sure everybody saw it, but you know, we live here. We're as active as we can be. I go to a lot of the council meetings, town council meetings. I've been very outspoken there over the years as well. But I just wanted to help give people a better view of what we do. You know, we do have a full school day. My, you know, we do all of the curriculum. It's very rigorous. My son, he goes to the Sims Creationists in the Making, which is a science co-op that teaches creationism instead of evolution, which is what we believe. I would love for my kids to be able to participate in U I L sports, not just sports, but Texas Math and Science Association. That's what I was a part of when I was a kid. I never made it to the competitions, but I loved being a part of the club. I did spelling. I went on to do spelling bees through U I L and I absolutely loved it. I think that our town is very hyper-focused on sports and they're not realizing the academic availability that children could have if they had access to U I L. We do pay taxes. I live right here in town. We've always contributed happily. When the bonds come through, I do my research and I have always made my best opinion before I voted. But we, you know, we want the school district to do well and continue to grow. We love our town. I'm going to go ahead and read on behalf of my son. He said, now that I've shared my story, I want to inform you of the extracurriculars I participate in. I am currently the first vice president of the Argyle four H Association. I took violin lessons from New Song School of the Arts for over two years. I've read every single Tuttle Twins book cover to cover for reading and I'm about to start offering beginner violin lessons and drone photography. I'm a coach at Argyle Jiu-Jitsu Academy and I've been a producer within two, for two of the Argyle Town Council campaigns. I'm also about to start bull riding. The fair's coming up. We're very involved in that.
One minute.
When I grow up, I want to be an NFL player. Every time I've shared this with any of my friends, they laugh. The thing that, the thing is, it only makes me want it more. The first year I played, I didn't know what to do and I was completely oblivious. But the coaches saw something in me that I couldn't see and ever since then, youth football has ignited a passion in me. I don't know of any other homeschoolers who want the same thing as me, but I do know that they would love the opportunity to play in higher level sports. That hits hard. My son loves playing football. And our only access to football this year, a real tackle, real tackle games, was to drive to South Fort Worth four evenings a week, which as a firefighter's wife, I'm not physically capable of doing. But here in town, I'll coach the Talonettes, I'll show up to the field. I can be there. It's realistic for us. If my time's up, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, that concludes everyone who signed up for public comment. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have one item there. Does anyone have any questions on that? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Dr. McDade, motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Matthew Slaton, second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Ms. Stewart?
Hello. Should we add a little? There you go. Budget Amendment Three. So we just did our second budget amendment approval at the last meeting and we talked about that we have another one. And this is in preparation for our end of year close. You'll see this as a final amendment recommendation on our regular August meeting. This will include both the general fund and the debt service fund. The debt service fund detail is not included tonight. It will be included in the regular August meeting. It will cover, as y'all remember, we're pricing our bonds tomorrow for a bond sale. I mean, it will cover the details of that, so we don't have the numbers yet to put in for that. On the general fund though, there is some, we've included the attendance and special population information through the end of the school year. On budget amendment two, we're talking through just the fifth, six weeks. So this takes us through the final year and through all our final reports. And there's also some minor changes. If you'll scroll down to the next page, thank you. Just some minor changes there and some others. When you see the decrease in the current property taxes, that's based on what we feel like will end up at year end. That is offset there in that state revenue number that's coming in as well. T R S on behalf is a required revenue and expenditure entry based on the state data. And then on the expenditure, if you'll go down to the next page. So the two biggest numbers here are going to be your transportation and your maintenance operations. And again, we're just trending quite a bit higher in all of our supplies, maintenance, contracted services, salaries, everything that's happening in those functions, trying to get through the end of the year there. The rest of them are mainly on projecting some end of year salaries for, as y'all know, our fiscal year starts September one. All of our staff are starting back now and will work through August, and so we accrue their salaries as of the end of the year. And so we have all of our new staff on there as well and the pay increases. So we've tried to project through end of year on those for the other functions. Some of them were performing quite a bit better than anticipated in curriculum. We had an item there that, a larger item that we didn't actually end up using this year. And then in co-curricula, we had some travel there that we didn't use. So those were the two reductions, the rest of it's increases, but we'll bring this back to you on the regular August meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Can you just explain the tax revenue, the first, very first item?
Yes, ma'am.
On the other side?
Yeah, the revenue side. So it looks like we're going to end up closer to about thirty seven, seven, seven hundred and fifty million rather than thirty eight million. That was just a, you know, a projection based on. We'll get certified data, as you know, in July and then that changes as they go through the remainder of the protest throughout the year. And so this is where we feel like we'll settle up, but also based on our collection percentage. And then all of that ties into that state funding and what we believe is in there as well. So you'll see reduction there, but it's really that offset in that state funding.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on the student code of conduct that was presented to us already?
So there's no changes there. Obviously, it's updated for all the legislative pieces that come out of the eighty ninth session. So there have been no adjustments made in the student code of conduct since you've seen that, since you saw that July twenty second.
I entertain a motion to approve action item seven A is presented.
Motion approved.
Mr. Matthew Slaton, motion approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Rich McGow with second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you.
So our next one is F N C E local. So that's a localized policy, obviously, that goes with student personal communication devices. It is the policy required to be updated through House Bill fourteen eighty one. And so you saw this trustees on July twenty second. We had a lengthy discussion about different pieces there. I do think it's important to note and restate that the new statute passed by the, by, in House Bill fourteen eighty one, been signed into our governor. It actually gives the restrictions of any use of personal communication devices. So the restrictions are in the statute. The districts do not have any flexibility over the actual restrictions from the beginning of the day to the end of the day and all things throughout the day. I know there are some people, I think there's been some conversation out there that maybe we have some flexibility with that. We do not. It also states that school district staff, you know, obviously in educator code of ethics, I think it's one point seven maybe. And we also have policy on that, that we have to follow state law. So that's where the enforcement will be, become very important on our campuses. It also requires, the statute requires disciplinary measures to be adopted by the board. And we have done that through administrative regulations and through the code of conduct. You've seen those. It also requires, the statute requires us to identify a method of storage, of which that's what we have in there in the administrative regulations as presented on July twenty second. And then it also requires a board report annually on the implementation of House Bill fourteen eighty one and the data that goes along with that. The only thing that you're going to have seen in the administrative regulations that were updated since July twenty second is going to be because T E A Commissioner Marath put out additional commissioner rules. And those were posted in board book last week for the public, but also given to you as trustees. And he went in there and they identified the qualified physician piece. So that's identified in the administrative regs. It identifies the definitions for school day, use, possession, school property, and then the rules for the responsibility of schools on the confiscated items. So those pieces were highlighted for you to see, but it did not change our administrative regs. We already had everything else in there that was, that was required of the commissioner rules as presented. So that is, nothing else has changed with that. And the principals and their admin teams have been heavily involved in writing those admin regs and reviewing those. So we're happy to answer any questions. If not, then we are ready to move forward.
One question. One of the things that was expressed in, first of all, as it relates to since January, July twenty second, it seems like this was, I mean, you've posted it, you've shared it.
It's been out.
We discussed it and I didn't really get any real feedback about it at all as it being good, bad, or indifferent. But during our discussion on the twenty second, there was some concerns expressed by the different campus leaders about how they would be able to schedule these pickup of phones that are confiscated. Was that updated?
We did. We did actually. I apologize, I should have pointed that out as well. Yes. So they're here and they want to elaborate on that. Why don't y'all come explain that? Because y'all did, you came up with that yourselves. Want to come talk?
It's a rhetorical question.
Sure you do.
Come on down.
Yeah. I think everybody, because elementary is a little bit different than the high school, but, and then also storage as they're coming up. We have purchased secured storage bins and so therefore they, they have lockable storage bins on the campuses. So, oh, Ms. Hayden, are you representing elementary?
I guess so. I got this.
Excellent. Ms. Hayden, tell us about elementary.
There's been a lot happening since then, so I hope I get this right, but we discuss dismissal time and getting into our elementary parking lots at three o'clock to pick up a phone can be very chaotic. And so, and we're all at duty at that time. And then after that time, at three twenty, when we're done with duty, we're in meetings or we're, you know, we're wrapping up our day and there's not somebody in the office. And so we're recommending that phones be picked up next day after arrival, so seven thirty to two fifteen is when we're recommending phone or watch. We feel like too, in the elementary level, it's not pertinent that they have their phone before they leave. They're not driving. We're also encouraging and recommending they don't even bring it. They have air tags if needed, so there shouldn't be a reason a kid needs their phone.
Yes, and y'all had put in there as well, same day before two fifteen or before, and before four, for secondary before four on the same day? Or the next day after seven thirty for grades pre-grade five and after eight thirty for secondary?
Yes.
Is that right?
It's a school day for us.
Yeah, okay. So yes, they did address that.
So wait a minute, so you're saying they can pick it up the same day it's confiscated?
Same date, but the parent has to take it home. They can't give it back to the child.
They just gave a deadline of when to come pick it up, so it didn't interfere with dismissal or the following day after arrival.
Okay. Makes sense.
And then if, if we find that hopefully parents and students can abide by these regulations. I talked with a lot of educators who seem to be on the side of just complete removal and just not even bringing them on campus. So if we find that this becomes a management issue or headache and students aren't being responsible, parents aren't helping the students be responsible, do we have an opportunity later in the year to just completely remove them from campuses?
Yes, we do. Because the way the policy is written is that we do administrative regs that determine that and we can adjust those regs at any point.
Okay. So if we, so if we find that between the start of school and Christmas, things are going bad.
First nine weeks or whatever. Yes.
They're going poorly, then come November, December, we can go ahead and change things for the spring.
So the way the statute allows you to completely ban store in a determined, which we are doing, backpacks or purses or the lockable pouches, which we do not have. So those are kind of our three options. And we're starting out with storing, powered down and storing.
And of course, parents have the choice where they can say, my child is not bringing a device at all. So make it a moot point.
And as the, the consequences, as they do go up, progressive consequences, there is a point where it is banned if you are a repeat offender. But right now, it's not that way for everyone, but it can be if we so choose to recommend that or if you're, if we're seeing that on campuses.
Does anyone else have any other questions? It's a good question, Mr. Wester. I just want to acknowledge that.
Yes, and you're right. That's what we discussed about adding. So that was added in there and then the other things came from the commissioner.
Actually, read the stuff.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve action of seven B is presented.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Wester, motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Rich McGow, the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you.
All right, I believe our next one is F D local and F M local. That's going to be the U I L homeschool participation. So Senate Bill four oh one had changed where districts have to opt out, whereas in the past it's been opt in. And so this requires districts by September first this year, normally it's August first, to take a public vote of opting out if you choose not to include homeschool students in U I L activities. So I know there was a lengthy discussion on the twenty second amongst our board members. I know that several of you have heard from community members over time, so we can continue that discussion. We did have our athletics and fine arts directors and coordinators here on the twenty second, along with Ms. Lumston and Ms. Knowles, just to kind of talk through really our experiences. We spent a lot of time discussing, looking at opportunities. I know there was, there was a consideration of cut sports versus non-cut sports and changing it every year. And there's just a lot of inconsistencies with that as we kind of work through. There's a lot, there's systems that have to be put in place from the, you know, the enrollment checking process, managing everything else we've got with growth and our, you know, our strategic growth plan coming forward. So we pulled forward a recommendation to opt out instead of trying to pick and choose different activities at this time, but obviously it's up for board discussion.
Well, I'll kick that off. I will say that that was a lengthy discussion we had in our last meeting and I will repeat what I've said in the past, which is, you know, one of the best things, we, you've done a lot of good things, but one of the best things you did is you put these things on informational items before we vote on them so that we can get feedback from the community. And I got unsolicited feedback and I solicited feedback. And, you know, I would say the feedback I solicited was overwhelming. I couldn't get anybody to agree with it. Nobody thought it was a good idea. Nobody, or they thought it, the timing was wrong. Some of the unsolicited feedback from homeschool families certainly were encouraging us to consider it. And, you know, I was, I, I can go either way. And I think most people that think this through see, can see the pros and cons of it. But when you weigh the cons, I think, I think when you get down to the end of, at this particular moment in time for our district, I think the cons outweigh the pros. And one of the concerns I have, and I think I express to people, is I don't want to do things that encourage people to unenroll from public school. You know, I don't, I don't think I want to advance policies that may do that. And when you have a school year like this, where we're going to be making some pretty significant changes like no phones, no devices, no AirPods. And then we take away, you know, and then we say, okay, well, but you can go home and enroll in an online class and then play in all the U I L sports. Am I encouraging kids to unenroll? To go to their parents going, school's terrible. They don't have mega lunch anymore. I've heard about it. Okay.
But he understands the why, Ms. Knowles.
I understand. I've heard about it. I don't, I don't do, I don't do mega lunch. But, so that's where I kind of, I couldn't get past that argument that am I, by doing this, am I encouraging kids to unroll and is it the right time? Another thing about timing, I don't think we have our policies in place yet. I don't think we have our procedures in place yet. And I would like to see the district, over the course of this next year, to really drill down and see if there was, is a way to establish some policy. Well, this may make sense in certain sports, limited spots. And the last thing I'll say is, is I do see this as something I would like this district to really consider if we ever did a virtual learning academy. And, and I think it could be, it could help jumpstart that academy when you say, hey, you, you know, education's not a one size fits all. I mean, that's, that's where our state is, that's where our nation seems to be. I mean, that's, that's where our state is, that's where our nation seems to be, it's where our community may be. And, and I think that could really help jumpstart the virtual learning academy if you tie that together. So for that reason, I'm, I'm inclined to accept the administration's recommendation.
I, I think administration, just thank you all for the feedback and the time. And really, again, being able to have the time to not only get both sides, the perspectives from administration, how, how are we going to handle this, what, what's it look like, what are the benefits, what, what are the cons to it? But, but the community feedback as well. And being able to have time to talk with other administrators in, in, in other districts. That, that's always helpful when you have time and resources to really look at it. And, and I agree with the timing factor of it all. There is a lot, there's always, there's always new things going with every school year, always. The, the first six, eight weeks of a school year is drinking from a fire hydrant regardless of anything changes. At least that's been the experience in, in my household. But with so many legislative changes that have gone on, we, we look at the amount of participation we have in, in UIL right now. And, and a lot of the feedback from families that, that I received was, you've had a hundred kids try out for a cut sport. And, and we're going to decrease the, the percentage of participation there. I think a carrot was dangled out in front of districts. From a revenue side, we, we know that almost every district across this state is struggling financially due to the, the funding, lack of funding that we've historically had. And so there are financial ramifications of, of saying no to this. But, but if you look at the opportunity cost, the, the loss is, is far out greater in, in my point. I'm not trying to empiricize this because we're talking about student participation. But, but if five students, to Mr. Westrom's point, five students unenroll from school to go to alternative schooling, homeschooling, to then participate in UIL, five students currently enrolled in the district, it, it means twenty-eight homeschool students would have to participate in UIL to offset the cost of five people unenrolling. Again, not looking at this as a financial only, but it is part of the equation for sure. I also think we do have parent choice. We have parent choice for pub ed. And there are benefits to homeschooling and there are benefits to pub ed. And there's not a perfect where they all fit, and, and there are situational things that fit better for families on both sides. But ultimately, I just don't think it's timing right now that's right. The feedback from administrators was greatly helpful. And I'm not, I'm not saying never, I mean, and, and I do think there are future opportunities to reevaluate this. It's something we look at every year, right? You, you have to, you have to opt out.
You have to opt out every year, or you have to make a decision every year.
You have to make a decision every year. So as we continue to grow, a- as we look at our, our strategic growth plan for this district, it, it's not, it, it's multi-high school campuses is what our strategic growth plan looks like. And so we don't know what the future vision could be, and so there's an opportunity for this, I feel, in the future. Just not a, as we go into this school year.
And I think it's been asked a couple of times throughout this whole conversation is, it's actually been allowed since 2021. And I don't think it's ever come to you guys to be discussed. And the reason it is right now is because we have to make the decision, because it has to be an opt-out, no more opt-in. And so I don't know that it's ever really been a, I mean, prior to me arriving, that you all have even had this discussion.
I don't think I even knew that you could opt in.
I was going to just say, I agree with everything you guys both said. You kind of said some of the things that were on my list. The only thing that I would add is, you know, I, I agree about the virtual learning academy. I think within a couple of years, it might be an opportunity where we can look at this and that it might be more of a workable solution, and we have some time to, to prepare for it. But another thing too is this coming year is also a year that we're, you know, we're doing a lot of work on the split for the two high schools. And I think at this point, from, on a secondary standpoint, I think everybody's got their plate full right now. And we want to do what's best for kids. And the feedback I've gotten as well has been majority, no, do not allow it at this point in time. And so I'm, I tend to follow that philosophy at this point, but I agree with both you guys. You said it very well.
And I'll just say that, first of all, Ms. Nguyen, thank you for coming and speaking today and speaking on your son's behalf. I've, this was one of those items that for the last couple of weeks, I just kept going back and forth on. I mean, I, there are pros and cons to, to, to both. I get frustrated with legislature when they force us to opt out of something, but it's also, you know, we're discussing something that we wouldn't be discussing otherwise, probably. And I think it is probably something that, or it is something that we'll look at in the future. For me personally, there are just too many variables involved. And we didn't have the time to go through and really, you know, determine which are the most important factors. And how do you limit or not limit these items? You know, there was talk about just doing it at the high school and only with non-cut sports. And there are all these different variables that may be the right thing to do, but, you know, with, with middle school and everything else, without giving it time, without putting processes and procedures in place to make sure that everything is running as smoothly as possible, it's just difficult to opt into something right now with so many unanswered questions. And so, again, please, you know, keep communicating with us. Any of the other, you know, friends and family that you have that are homeschooling, you know, feel free to reach out because I don't think, you know, this is a one-year opt-out. I don't think it's off the table for future years. And again, there are pros and cons to, to both sides, and I see a lot of pros in it, but right now, there's just not enough information for me to be comfortable opting in.
I, I don't think there's any chance, I don't think, I don't know, maybe y'all did, but I didn't think there's any chance you could implement this at the middle school level, given the numbers we have, the participation rates we have, the number, I mean.
I think that was what we, we weren't, we weren't going at it in middle school at all this time.
Just to, to give the community, I mean, this is for community feedback, there are homeschool communities that we do value and do ask you to support the district because we do think of what the school district serves us all. But I, I don't see it in the, in the middle school near, near future, as maybe you could see it in, in the high school in certain sports. But, you know, it's just my thoughts, you know, because our new middle school numbers are ridiculous. I mean, they're, they're really, it's really high.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve administration's recommendation of the proposed policies to opt out of SB four oh one, UIL homeschool participation, argyle ISD as presented.
Can I make a motion to approve the opting out of UIL homeschool participation, SB four oh one?
Right. Mr. Westrom, motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. McDavid with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Ms. Stewart, are you taking stoppings?
Okay. Okay. The supplemental pay was presented in July twenty-second, and I believe the question that we didn't have for that night to answer was what had changed from the previous year? So Dr. Daniel has gone in here and highlighted those line items that have changed or have been added since last year. So you can see several of the items were under the middle school section. We did not specifically name out sixth grade center in some of the areas, and they needed to be named out similar to the middle school, like UIL coordinator, yearbook sponsor. We also added a dance and drill team director at the middle school, a stipend there. A department head at CTE for middle school, a visual and performing arts coordinator for the district, a lead diagnostician stipend, and then HOSA and CTSO stipends at the high school. And I believe those were the, all the changes. Do you have any questions on those?
We, we have done, has Dr. Daniel done comparisons with other districts and the stipends they pay?
I don't know how, the most recent, yeah, I don't know about the most recent comparison he's done. I know, I don't know the, the most recent he's done. I mean, those, they do not seem, our, our directors do not seem to think that they're out of whack any. So compared to what they're, you know, as far as having, in order to, you know, recruit for that. But I can, we can certainly follow up and ask him, the last time we did a comparison.
So Liz, I know when we did our, I believe our first budget workshop, we looked at staffing. And one of the added positions was a middle school dance team director. So is the stipend on top of that salary that was put in the budget workshop?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I believe this, I believe on that budget workshop, we had the base, the teacher estimate that we used, FTE, and so this would be on top of that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Does anyone else have any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve action item seven D as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Matthew Slaton, motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Rich McDowell with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Okay.
It's the Liz show right here.
Yes, we'll, we'll tag team this a little bit. So, you know, one of the wonderful things about where we were in the spring as we were going through the budget process is we had four budget priorities. And those four budget priorities went back out to staff, came back, we talked through that through your workshops. And it was compensation increase, reducing class sizes, bringing back some of the positions we had to eliminate, and then a balanced budget. You know, Mr. Westrom, I know it was, it was made very clear that you wanted to get as many of our classrooms filled, filled up as we can to try to get the class sizes down. We did that. We, as a board, you adopted a three-point-six million dollar, you know, in positions. It was about forty-some teachers, brand new to the district, not replacement positions, but new FTEs. And I know everyone out there is very thankful for those positions, and we have, we're filling them, and so.
We're EVLS.
Yeah, yeah. We're to a point where we need to have some contingency positions in the event we are, you know, continuing to grow. Some of our class sizes are creeping up to the twenty-one already, and school starts next week. We've got a couple of grade levels that are right there at the twenty-two. Our challenge, just to be very, very, very honest, is space. And so we're going to have to get very creative if we end up do, if we end up opening some additional sections to the, you know, the campuses, they've, they've been in the conversations, elementary specifically, about where could we put another classroom? Who could float, those kinds of things. And so we're working through that right now, but this would give us the opportunity to have an additional five positions. You had already given us five, we've used three of those. We gave one to sixth grade center just this past week for science and social studies. And then we've got two left, and this gives us an additional five. We're looking at having, possibly having another life skills position to open because our numbers there are growing, have increased. And so that's what this is for in terms of just having some contingency positions. But we're definitely at West and JRE seeing a need to potentially look, get really creative with some space for this year. And we know we're going to have another year of it.
And, and next year.
And next year.
Because we're behind a year because of twenty-four bond not passing.
And I think you may go ahead and talk through the fact that we're looking at what we're doing with portables.
Yes, so we are currently looking at how quickly we can secure portables, what it takes, you know, where, where you can run electrical, how to get the water in the sewer out there. And so we're working in that process to see, you know, if it comes to it, do we have to item this year? Right, if we're out of space and the students still show up, we need a place to put them. So we're working through that process. We've got some updated numbers on how much it costs to get it here. And then again, it's, when we, when we built West, we did not plan on the need for portables there. So we did not run the conduit out for electrical to a certain spot. So there's a little bit more work to do at West. At JRE, we had planned that, so we have the conduit already run and we have a spot. But of course, you still have to come back in with the fencing. There's a lot that goes into getting them set up. So it's not like we could say we want them by the beginning of school and actually have them at that point. But we are working towards a process if we say, you know, we're to a student count and a, a lack of space, and we need them within a month, that we're working towards that process of being able to know exactly what it would cost us and what we need to do in that process to have them. So it's not a fun conversation, but it's, it's the reality of what we're looking at.
Do you recall our timeline when Hilltop had portables? I, I know that those were on loan portables, so they were relatively easy to get.
They were.
But I, there was still a lot that had to be done to get them classroom-ready.
Yes, you know, at that point in time, I believe we had to make sure the pad site was ready. You get them moved in, then you do the skirting around, you have to, have to have the data run, you have to have the electrical run. If you get one with water and, you know, with the bathrooms and you have the water and sewer run out there, they are actually looking at some, some ways to do that, maybe with tanks rather than lines run on those. So it's, it's not an incident process. That one, I believe, we worked on for several months once we'd secured the portable on loan before we had them up and running. Now you have the fencing issues, the school safety laws have changed since we put those in, and you do have to have a secure perimeter around those included, so there would be that aspect of it as well, depending on where you could place them. So I do believe it's, it's definitely some longer lead time than what we'd looked at in the past. But we're working towards knowing exactly what that is. You also have to have building permits. So it's not, again, it's not, we can't just say we're going to put them up tomorrow and instantly they're there. It's, it's a several-week process.
Were they like, wasn't it like three hundred thousand dollars, something around there?
I think we had spent a little over a hundred thousand on the ones that were on loan based on the, because you, you know, required to move them, have them put in, everything that had to be set up on-site and then move them off. I believe the cost of a portable, just the portable by itself without any setup, is a little over a hundred thousand now. And then you've got to figure in the cost of what it, what it costs to get electrical, if you're going to run sewer and water, the fencing that would have to go around there, the data out there, and then all the skirting and everything.
So we're talking maybe two hundred thousand plus for what, two classrooms?
Potentially, depends on the, again, it depends on the site. I'm hopeful we'll get them closer to about a hundred and fifty, but that would be, again, depending on the cost to get everything to it.
And several grade levels on these campuses, thinking about all four elementaries, several grade levels are right at the nineteen mark right now, which is, gives us some buffer, that's, that's a good place to be in. But we, each campus has a grade level or possibly two that are sitting at the twenty-one to twenty-two. But it's not, it's not campus-wide right now, but it is, you know, we, we are creeping up that way in a couple of grade levels on, specifically out at JRE and West.
Is there?
And Hilltop as well, one grade level.
Is there availability of portables? I mean, how?
Yes, ma'am.
Purchase, are we talking about purch- purchasing, leasing, or?
We would look at both options to see what would be better. You know, if we're looking at that we need them for several years or into the future, you know, purchasing is going to be the better option. But we will look at both and run the numbers and make sure that, of what we recommend.
We've had portables at Hilltop, we've had portables at the middle school.
We have.
It's not ideal, but it's part of fast growth. I don't, when I think about our future, I don't know how you get around not having some portables next year.
So when we were planning in this past spring and looking at what it was going to take to get through this year based on the numbers at that point in time, we thought we might make it through this year without portables, but we knew that facing the next year before we opened an elementary, we'd more than likely have to have portables at several of the campuses at the elementary level.
And the delay on all that was the twenty-twenty-four bond not passing?
Yes, sir.
That we lost a year.
But we are, we are now looking at potentially, potentially implementing some this year depending on when we could get them.
The alternatives to portables are increased class size.
Correct.
Floating tight teacher situations.
Taking your, your specials teachers and them having to be on a cart, aren't on a cart.
Yeah, taking teachers out of, or you know, yeah, special teachers out of classrooms. Implementing some kind of rule where new enrollees can only go where we have space and not to their community school.
Correct.
So none of those are good options either.
I mean, I've, I've experienced them, but they're not great options now.
So obviously, cost is one thing, but safety and security is the other, and perimeter fencing is one thing. But I know at Hilltop, I believe, if memory serves me right, you had one portable that actually had sewage and water, and you had one portable that didn't.
Correct.
And so uh, I remember as a watchdog, like, having to transport all the kids a- across the, the driveway into the school and that. So just throwing that out there from a safety and security standpoint, I, sewage would probably be the best option even though it's costlier.
Correct, and again, we, we're looking at some tank options that you can put with them where you're not actually running a line out there. Um, it would not be drinkable water, um, so it wouldn't be like having a water fountain, but it would give you bathroom, bathroom facilities there.
Right.
So there's some options that we can do with that.
You also have weather too.
You do have weather. It is not an I, you know, it's, it's not the choice that we would make if we just had a choice between, um, having everybody inside the building or portables. But when we have as many students show up as we do in the limited space, it's what we're having to face.
And I know we've been talking, you know, checking in with middle school and high school, I mean, they can both speak for themselves. But uh, in the sixth grade center, um, I think they feel pretty good right now about the, their class size averages. They've, they worked with their teachers, their teachers wanted common planning periods. Um, and so some of theirs will be a little off balance, but that's what they wanted prioritized over every class being smaller. So I think they've worked through that and feel pretty good about that. Um, and if you have anything else to add, you can, but I think they were, they're in a good spot right now.
I know we talked a lot about portables on additional teachers here, but.
Yeah.
You have to have a place for them to teach, so.
Where they're gonna go if we get there is part of the conversation.
Anyone have any other questions, uh, or comments on action item seven E?
So these extra positions, we're looking at the possibility of either in a building or possibly in a portable at some point.
And we, we don't have them assigned right now or anything.
Right.
Um, they, they would be contingency positions to, to be able to move forward if, if that were the case.
Okay.
But they are elementary school positions.
They are, yes, because that's where we, yes. We just gave one to the sixth grade center um, for science and social studies. Those, those core contents were creeping up a little bit, so we went ahead and released one of the last ones that you approved to her.
And we have what, two left there, or one, two?
Uh, two, I believe two.
So this would give us eight.
Seven.
Seven more.
Seven.
Hers and the seven more. It'd be a total of ten, because we had five the first time and five the last round.
Got it, okay, yep.
And talking to Ms. Funderberg, she's expecting to possibly need one for a life skills unit.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve action item seven E as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Matthew Slaton motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. McDavid with a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Okay, the depository contract, we talked about this on, on the July board meeting. Uh, we walked you through how we, every uh, two years, it's required to be looked at. And after um, you've run out of extensions, that you have to put it back out as an R F Q, so we've done that. Uh, Point Bank was our recommendation, and um, they are here with the local branch. There is a specific wording on the motion, um, that Point Bank does require in order to have um, people as authorized signers on the account. And historically, we've had the board officers, and we've had Dr. Carpenter and myself on there. So um, if you do choose, I would ask that you use language that's here or similar language.
Liz, why do we go away from Point in the past?
Um, when we first went away from them, they were having uh, quite a bit of turnover there at their local branch, and we were having some issues with corrections on the account, um, and just a lot of changes on there. That was, it was giving our office a hard time with balancing bank statements and keeping, you know, changes here and changes there. So we moved away from them. Um, we had a great um, great contract with Independent Bank. Um, we, I think we went over, they were either bought out or merged by South State, um, or they did not submit in time. Um, so we couldn't even consider them, whether they would be ranked higher or lower than anybody else. Um, I can tell you though, that after the switch over to South State, our, we still have a local contact, but as far as any type of help with getting into an account, looking at what something was on a deposit or, or a check or anything like that, it is you're calling somebody, um, you know, in Georgia or somewhere else. So it's not the local aspect of that is what you've seen in the past. Um, Point Bank is a, um, they've, you know, worked very well with the district. They've been a sponsor of many things, they uh, work with Eagle Partners quite a bit, um, and they're very um, active in our community.
Anyone have any other questions for Liz? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation for the depository contract to be awarded to Point Bank and authorized board officer Sam Slaton, Greg Hawxworth, and Matt Slaton, superintendent Dr. Courtney Carpenter, and CFO Liz Stewart as authorized signers on the accounts.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Westrom motion to approve, does he have to read that motion to approve? Okay, all right, I just want to make sure.
You've read it, so I think we can put that in in a few minutes, thank you.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. McDavid with a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
All right, the next one is the delinquent tax attorney contract, um, that was also presented in July, uh, re- recommending that we stay with uh, Soc- Soco and Burrows as our current delinquent tax attorneys um, collections, and then uh, work with Limebarger on um, delinquent tax, sorry, on P V S audits and appeals. Um, there is not specific wording that has to be on the motion on this one, so you can choose to make any motion that you want.
Any.
Any.
Any, wow, wow. Anyone have any questions for Mrs. Stewart? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve action item seven G as presented.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Westrom, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Matthew Slaton with a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
All right, last one for me tonight. Um, purchase of attendance credits, this one is required every year when we're um, recognized as a, or assigned as a wealthy district. Um, this one does have very specific wording that is required on the motion. Um, and you'll find that written out on the second page. Um, and this one again is something that we do annually every August, um, once we've been notified. And we were notified in July that we met the criteria again.
Anyone have any questions for Mrs. Stewart? All right, here we go. I will entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. We delegate uh, contractual authority to obligate the school district under Texas Education Code eleven point one five one one C four to the superintendent solely for the purpose of obligating the district under Texas Education Code four eight dot two five seven and Texas Education Code Chapter forty-nine, subchapters A and D, and the rules adopted by the Commissioner of Education as authorized under Texas Education Code forty-nine dot zero zero six. This includes approval of the agreement for the purchase of attendance credit, netting chapter forty-eight funding.
Thank you.
So moved.
Oh, Mr. Slaton, motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McDowell with a second, any further discussion, rereading of the motion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, at this time, at this time, uh, it is four fifty-four P M. We are going to adjourn to executive session. When we come back to adjourn the meeting, there will be no further action taken. Hope you all have a good evening, thank you.